Yeah, everybody, we have a bug going around. Megan got it. He's got it. He's got it. Probably gonna have it much worse later on because he's not feeling well. Everybody. Yvonne.
Oh, no.
I take antibiotics for my face 24/7, so I don't usually get super sick. I'll get it, but not like they. This is day two for him. He toughed it out yesterday, but he wasn't a happy camper.
That does kind of make you...
Megan is miserable. Miserable. Missed two days as well. Miserable.
Hey, Sylvia. Is Jack ready?
Oh, really? Cool.
Okay. Call this meeting, this special meeting of the city council at 7:00. Please rise for invocation.
Dear Lord, we come before you this evening. We thank you, my Father, for the opportunity once again to come before you and give you praise for all you've done for us. We thank you, my Father, for the blessings that you bestowed upon each one of us. We pray, my Father, to be with us, the city council, that we make our right decisions for the city of Aransas Pass and our residents. This we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agenda item three, public hearing of the fiscal year for 2015 tax rate.
Mayor and council, what you have before you. Well, experienced record valuation increases, not as big as the school district. I was at the school district budget meeting on Monday. The school district has official $1 million from increased valuation. Million, one, zero, zero, six, and some change. We're not that well off. We get exemptions and senior and disabled and new, and so we, our piece of the pie isn't that great. But we're gonna talk about the tax rate tonight and what the proposed tax rate is. And I know in prior years, you guys are accustomed to doing the tax rate and the budget all in one. Since I don't know what the pleasure of the council is, we've got two working budgets depending on the tax rate that's adopted, and that'll be the budget that we introduce in our September meetings for the October 1 start. So, just a quick recap. The tax rate is composed of M&amp;O, which is maintenance and operation, and INS, which is debt. Our INS rate is a fixed rate. That is what is already obligated based on taxes and other revenues that come in. The tax rate is composed of a total taxable value, less exemptions, less ceilings, less new property that was just added to the rolls, new additions, new renovations. So while our total value went from 499 million in all three counties to a little over 538 million, it was a substantial increase, but not total county-wide was over 600 million. But once they start reducing those amounts, we get back into the 500 million range, which is still a substantial amount. Right now, we receive about 1.45 from San Pat, 94,000 from Aransas, and 35,000 from Nuasis Counties for a combined total of 1.58 that we used toward maintenance and operations. And that rate is .318344 per hundred dollars of valuation. Our debt rate is .36. And if you recall, I told the council a few meetings ago that we were gonna work on turning that around. You should never be paying more in debt than you are in maintenance and operations. That's just not a healthy... You wouldn't want to do it in your home budget. We don't want to do it in our city budget. So, on the INS side, 1.65 from San Pat, 107,000 from Aransas, and 40,000 from Nuasis for a combined debt obligation of 1.8 and change. Okay? There are some specifics in the law. We can only increase the M&amp;O rate by 8%, which would be an automatic. What we're coming to you today is more than 8%, which may, could initiate a rollback election, and I'll go into that. The effective rate is basically what would collect the same, and I quote "same" dollars in last year's money. The only same the state looks at is the same for you to collect and pay your obligation of debt. That's it. The rest of it, you roll back. That would change our rates to 57 cents, down from 68 cents. For the total valuation of this year, 531 million dollars, almost 532 million dollars. So, that would reduce the amounts into the general fund by 343,000 dollars if we adopted the effective rate. Because what that does is while the debt rate remains the same, it changes a little bit because of the increased value. It drops from 36 cents to 33 cents. What that does to our M&amp;O rate is it drops it all the way down to 23 cents, which is significant hurt to the general fund. Then we have what's called the rollback rate. What is going to still pay debt and also add that 8% to the M&amp;O fund? That rate would be 62 cents, and on that 531 valuation, it would reduce the amounts in the general fund by 63,000 dollars. And again, that's because the only debt that is consistent and static is what is in the debt model. The rest of it, we have to adjust. The proposed tax rate on that 531 million is we're proposing to keep the current year's tax rate at .680354. That begins to turn the tide on our valuation numbers. It begins to, I'm sorry, I didn't put that in there. It begins to put our M&amp;O rate at 30... Gosh, let me open up that. Brings the INS rate, leaves it at the 33 cents, and brings the M&amp;O rate to 35 cents and some change. So we begin to start putting more into operations and beginning to draw that debt down. Now, we could have been, that brings an additional 219,000 into the general fund. We could have been tricky and been slick-willy and did this a number of ways and not been as transparent. What the law says is I can change the debt model to whatever I want. So we could have kept it at 68 cents and gone out and borrowed those additional 7 cents on the debt side for several million dollars in bonds, and the tax rate would have remained the same, and nobody had to say so, and really, nobody... That's not fair. I want you guys to understand how much debt we're carrying. I want you to understand what the operation rate, and I want you to understand what the total impact is to the community based on the taxes. That would have been a one-year tax note. We would have hedged that, okay, I'm gonna collect an extra 300,000 or so, let's say, in revenue, borrowing it. I'm gonna borrow, I'm gonna take a one-year tax note, and when we collect, I'm gonna hope that we get to 95% collection and pay it back. That's not a good way to do business. It really isn't. Could we have done it and used that money? Yeah, but the chances of us drawing it down in a year are slim to none, and that would have been a very heavy burden to carry. And I'm trying to get us out from too much debt. We're gonna try to go into a pay-as-you-go model. So, on the residential side, even though the numbers are inflated in terms of the additional millions of dollars that increase, that really is only seven new home starts. And those home starts are about 18 months old, because remember, they subtract all the new value out from the current rule. So, the property values from the 1314, the average Aransas Pass home was 127,093 dollars. This year, or the 1415 value is 143,202 dollars. So, last year, the residents would have paid 864,68 cents. This year, they will pay on that same tax rate, 974,21 cents. So, staff's recommendation is adopting the proposed tax rate. Now, I do need to warn the council that that could initiate a rollback election. Because it's over the 8%, the residents are entitled to petition for a rollback and take it back down to the 62 cents. The additional revenue, we're thinking at this point, will fund the fire department personnel. All the departments are scrubbing their revenues in terms of fees and things that are in there. Are we being as efficient? Are we collecting what the ordinance says we're supposed to collect? What do our contracts say? How much of the contracts do we get? All of our enterprise, those industrial district contracts, the leases, everything is in play and negotiable right now. We do have several capital projects that had millions and several hundred thousand dollars of savings. The Water Tower, for example, 2725, and a couple of the other projects had savings in them. And our language was so broad when we went out, we said they were gonna be funding infrastructure. They weren't specific to a project. So that, we're gonna keep investing that money. I think if we would have gone out for debt, we wouldn't have been able to spend what we have, plus the additional fast enough, and the interest would have been ticking. We are looking at a consolidation of services. I told you about the senior services in the county, and Blake's gonna talk to you here a little bit about insurance rates. Where we are, we had increases on the windstorm, obviously. Everybody had an increase on the windstorm, and the city's no different. So we're gonna go out for RFP to find a different provider and see how much we can save on that. I don't anticipate it's gonna be a whole lot, but it is what it is. Our health insurance rates, we went out for RFP. We received several back, and the swing went from 6% increase to where we, from where we are right now, which we pay a total of about 616,000 dollars a year for health insurance for our employees. So, the swing was anywhere from 616 to a high of 757. So, we went back to the insurance company and have gone back and negotiated and have come up with really some creative solutions with other products, not just our health insurance. We've, we're, what the plan is, I hope, and if you have any questions, Blake's here, we're gonna increase the deductible to lower that rate, but then the savings, we're gonna reinvest and buy stopgap insurance. So if there is a major medical hospitalization, we have like an Aflac or something like that that does a cash payout that covers that large deductible. And that's, you know, 27 dollars versus an increase of several thousand dollars per year per employee. So, we're, I want you to know, we're scrubbing every dollar, and we're trying to stretch the dollar till it screams, but our recommendation is to adopt, leave the tax rate as it is. Any questions?
On a rollback election, what's that gonna cost the taxpayers?
It'll cost about 100,000 dollars by the time we get the equipment and the election and the notice, and so that'll, that'll eat a good chunk. I will tell you, I was at the school meeting on Monday. They opted to keep their rate the same as well. They were in a position to roll back a few cents. They kept their current rate. Their additional, 65% or so of that million went to salary increases. It went to a 3% across the board to the salary. They put some in operations and instruction, but yet that entire million is eaten up by them pretty quickly. That's important for us because my discussion with the board and the superintendent had been that that additional million in revenue pays for a $10 million bond, and there is a discussion on going out for a bond election from them at some point in time. And our school taxes are right about $1.07, which, all over the area, that's unfortunately, that's, you know, one of the going rates. Kingsville's at $1.57. You pay $3.19. By the time all the entities are added in Kingsville, you're at $3.19 or so per hundred dollars of value, whereas you're about $2.07 in Aransas Pass. So, we're not the highest, but we're definitely not the lowest. Rockport is still lower. They've got a smaller and a different demographic. Portland has opted to go with their rollback rate plus a penny, so they're going to be in the high 50s. And Ingleside has opted to go back to their effective rate, but he's got, you know, the Ingleside corridor has all of the projects on the La Quinta. So he's entered into 380 agreements as opposed to our industrial agreements. He's entered into 380 agreements, which is a product in the local government code that gives you more control and gives you a better handle on how much revenue you can take in. This does not include, there's a couple of things on the horizon, obviously. This doesn't include the proposal that we're gonna come to you with on those annexation areas. So we're gonna be, what I'm telling you is we're gonna be in the same position next year because we're gonna add millions of dollars of value onto the rolls, and the rates will continue to fall. And next year, you'll be faced with the same decision, keep the rate or roll the rate back.
Agenda item four, appointing an ad hoc charter revision committee, and B, consider an act on awarding the request for proposal for health insurance and benefits.
The ad hoc charter committee was approved by council on, I guess, two council meetings ago. What was not discussed was the composition of that ad hoc committee. The charter specifies nine members be selected, and before, there was applications that were put out. Sometimes you had nine, sometimes you didn't. People from other boards were taken. What we're proposing is that every council, you're supposed to have nine with two alternates. We're proposing that every council member appoint two people, and the mayor appoint one person and the two alternates to make up the nine-member ad hoc committee with the two alternates.
Do we go out for, or do we request applications?
We will request applications, but those appointments will come directly from each of the council members.
Okay.
So if you can go shake some bushes and get people to participate, that would be
And agenda item B, Sylvia?
We did go out for requests for proposals, and Blake is here. We've, you guys selected GSM as our agent of record to go out and do the proposals. What we are going to propose is to remain with our United coverage, which is within the TML bucket. It's the same insurance provider we have now. The difference is we will be, we will have a higher deductible, and that's what I was explaining to the council. The rate drops 5.5%, so we're going to reinvest that 5.5% into stopgap coverage to cover that high deductible. So it would be really a zero net to the city on insurance coverage. What is additional this year on the coverage is because under Obamacare, there's a lot of reporting requirements that we're, we don't have the capability to do, and neither does the insurance provider, the TML that we use. The ancillary products that we have, Aflac, we're changing from Aflac to Forester Benefits, which has a wider array. The employees are gonna be able to keep their Aflac coverage if they want to. It just won't be payroll deducted. It'll be straight bank drafted from them. But in, in all of that comes a package that does the reporting and all of the Obamacare requirements for us, and that's gonna cost the city about 15,000 dollars a year.
Additional 15,000?
I will tell you that most of our, most of our insurance discussion was about how to keep the group healthy. How do we, we're, we're at a, we're at a position right now where I get insurance information, i.e. how much money was spent on prescription drugs this year, this month, you know, on a month-by-month, how much was on doctor's visits, how much ER visits. We're, we're in a position right now that I can't give you good itemization. In other words, are employees mostly taking blood pressure pills? Can we do something in the workplace to lower, you know, blood pressures? Can we do something on the prescription med side to, you know, help that? So what we're gonna do this year before our coverage changes is we're going to have an employee health benefit on the 17th of September. We're gonna partner with HEB. Most of those covered, most of those services are covered. Those wellness services are covered under our plan, so it won't cost the employee anything. We'll get a glucose screen, a cholesterol screen, some basic blood pressure, and just a basic benchmark of how healthy is our group. The insurance companies are telling us we have a very unhealthy group, but they're basing it on some past, the last five years of history where we did have some very unhealthy people on the plan. So, we're trying to dig ourselves out of that and try to get the group healthier. I don't see insurance rates going down anytime soon. I don't. I wish I could tell you that we're in a position, Ingleside has chosen to use their money and buy down dependent coverage to make it affordable. Right now, if you wanna insure your children on our plan, it's about 750 dollars a month. If you wanna insure your family, it's almost 1,400 dollars a month. That's mostly undoable, so we have very few people on the plan who do those things. And I wish I could tell the employees that we're gonna be in a position to do that. I just don't see that in the near future. I think we'll be able to offer what is a minimum coverage, and they're called MECC plans, that is purely doctor's visits and things. It will not cover major medical, it won't cover hospitalization. But even that plan for your children is 180 dollars a month. I think the family was 250 dollars a month for just basic. For wellness services, you go to the doctor, you get a prescription, you know, you, you can call Teladoc and get, you know, an over-the-phone visit. But I don't see insurance rates going down anytime soon. I don't. I don't know how we're gonna bite that bullet, and at some points, I'm afraid, we're gonna have to ask employees to start sharing the burden, whether it's 100 dollars a month or something. It's just, it's getting very expensive.
How many, when you went out for RFP, how many carriers responded to it?
They all, they all responded. Most respond, most in the, what they call the open marketplace, your, your, your man footballs, those responded with, due to the claim history and the health of the group. They would not be committed with that. So what, the major, where we actually got a build-out of, I guess, comparison is to a self-insured provider, and it's, it's a, it's an aggressive approach to managing your healthcare. What, what got me on it this year was it's a little bit aggressive to throw to the A, the city, and B, the employees, right after that. It's a higher deductible plan. You can manage some of that with these ancillary products, but it is heavy, the owners put on, the employees have really handed the city to really, and hand us, is putting in a program to manage the healthcare and really put on the monthly to make sure that we come back in and make sure they've been to the doctor, checked their blood pressure, checked their, they are taking the medicines that have been given to them, trying to get them not to go to the emergency room for stuff that's not an emergency, is a steering to...
Doctor's offices, sorry.
Urgent cares are even better. Or doctor's offices, urgent cares instead of the emergency room, because that's a, it's a big hit that the plan can take every time that that happens. And it's, it's, when your deductibles are very low, it's, it's not really recognized by the, by the plan participant, you know? So, it didn't cost them any more than the emergency room or a doctor's office. It cost the plan a lot of money. And to go into that model without any real education in employees was, was a little scary. The self-insured model, it was a little scary because I think they need some time to recognize the, the costs to them when they do go to the, the emergency room, and I, I think they needed some time to realize. And hopefully this year, we can build a plan to where, if we have to jump into a higher deductible plan or a self-insured plan. They're, they're great plans. I just don't know that we were, we as a group prepared to jump into that this year because of just the lack of education to the employees and stuff. Hopefully this year, we can put in some wellness programs. It's a great start with HEB, and, and put in wellness programs, we're monthly, we're kind of hitting on, and people are a little more aware of their healthcare. And at that point in time, I think that will be a real option to, to, to look next year. Or it will hopefully open the marketplace up a little bit somewhere, move across from now, and say, you know what, it's really been a lot, claims are down, people aren't visiting the emergency room so much. There, there's, there's a lot of things that change. Let's take a look at it. I think you'll see a major change at that point in time in, in your, your rates. I don't think that council is right. I don't think rates in general are going down. I don't, I don't look to expect that in the future. I think that everybody is, what we're seeing is anywhere from 15% to 30% increase, and sometimes higher. You know, higher than a 30 is, is a little bit, let's say, a little bit less common, but, but 15 to 30 is a period common for most people to see that right now. So, and I think we'll see that for the next few years until something balances out. So it's, it's, this will be a big change to, to every large employer, small employer, but managing the healthcare within, and we're gonna have to do it with this plan also. It's, we're gonna have to get in there and truly look at some exercise programs, look at some programs that can really help some of the employees, and get them, help to make them accountable, accountable back to the, back to the plan also. And that's gonna make a big difference in rates. In, in a system, the, the rates are increasing regardless. So, in looking at if staying in the UnitedHealthcare this year was the best option for the city and employees, it was a, a major change for both to, to go in that direction.
Anybody else? Any questions?
I was glad to hear that you said as far as some kind of a exercise program, something like that, I think would be good.
Yes.
You know, a discount for the city employees to go somewhere, you know, that would, that's great right there.
And it will help a lot, and that stuff is taking into account when you're looking at open marketplace app rates and stuff like that. They do wanna see wellness programs. They do wanna see that the employees, that the, the plan participants are concerned with healthcare. You know, they don't, that, that does make a big difference in wellness rates. So if, we are moving in the right direction. I think that we'll be pleased with what, what happens to them next year. It's just to make a major change this year is a little bit, a little bit scary for the city employees, and I think it was...
It's way scary.
I'm in the situation.
The, the self-insured plan, while it had controls for us, i.e. we could increase the emergency room, you know, those are moral hazards, right? If you don't have any skin in the ass, you're not gonna protect yourself. So what we did is we raised the emergency room deductible. You, you pay the first 500 bucks before we ever touch it, but it's still, I mean, when I look at the, the emergency room use, you know, Blake thinks it's because we don't have a whole lot of local providers here, and so they use the emergency room. I don't, I don't know if that's true or not, because we've got urgent care centers throughout that are insured, that the deductible is 100 dollars, but it's still a more expensive option than going to your normal doctor. So, gonna try to work with care regional or the Spon Health System, somebody to get us, to get us healthier.
And this was United Healthcare?
Yes, TML, yes. It's, it's a United Healthcare Fund.
Any other questions? What is the pleasure of the council?
It's United Healthcare and Forester Benefits. Forester Benefits, right.
Well, I make a motion that we go with the recommendation of United Healthcare and Forester Benefits and Social Benefits.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. All right. Agenda item five, citizens' comments. Anybody have any comments? Nope. All right. I closed citizens' comments. Agenda item six, executive session, recess, open meetings, and retire into executive session pursuant to chapter 551 of Texas Government Code. Consult with city attorney, real estate, Con Brown Harbor, and Erickson-Jensen lease. Deliberate regarding personnel, harbor master, and city secretary. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Are y'all still in the interim?
No.
Okay. So we're, we'll work out, open enrollment's gonna happen at some point in the next couple of weeks. We'll send out, we'll send out notes. Oh.
Save the city 800 a month.
Every little bit counts.